I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Public Safety and Human Services Committee, held on Tuesday, May 20th, commencing at 4:31 PM. Council members in attendance are Council President Kritzer, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Noiva Camina. Online, we have Councilmember Fields and Councilmember Anderson and myself, Councilmember Slade Dean as the presiding officer. Council Vice President Forsyth will not be able to join. There are six items on the agenda today, few that are for action, one that is read-only, one informational, and then one item from another committee. So the first item is approving the agreement to administer homeless outreach software in partnership with the City of Kirkland and City of Bellevue, and we have Human Services Manager Brooke Buckingham and Deputy Director Sarah Viall.
Great. Good afternoon. I would just like to provide a little bit of background on this item. In fall of 2023, the homeless outreach team started using a new software platform called Apricot, thank you. And prior to using that for quite a few years, we were using the old-school spreadsheet where we were entering case management data and client data. So this was definitely an upgrade for our staff to enter this data and be able to report out to council. Around the same time, City of Kirkland hired outreach staff, and Slade is a great opportunity to join in our efforts. So they started entering data as well. As we know, many of our unhoused clients move across our cities. We also know that there's a lot of efficiencies in collaborating and tracking client outcomes and being effective with our government resources. Recently, City of Bellevue reached out and expressed interest. So we've been in conversation with them for a few months about having them use this platform as well. A lot of our clients are shared, so there'll be some work that we need to do to make sure we are deduplicating data, but more collaboration on that front. In order to approve this, we need council's approval to enter into a formal partnership. We are asking that this agreement be placed on the June 3rd consent agenda. Happy to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? Council President Kritzer?
Thank you so much. Glad to see this being implemented. I know we've heard about the benefits from our staff for a little while now, and glad we will be on the spreadsheet system. And also the collaboration. I was a little unclear from the agreement. So in terms of the data, will everyone be accessing the same database, or is it that we're sharing the same kind of license agreement?
So it's one license agreement, and the city hosts that agreement with the vendor. And so we are responsible for paying the dues. Then we will submit the proportionate share to each of the cities to cover their costs in this agreement. But we have the license directly with the vendor.
So our data about the people that our staff is interacting with is not getting intermingled with what Bellevue is keeping or what Kirkland is keeping, or is it?
The platform allows all of us to access the data. So when we log in and we say, "I'm working with Joe," I would do a search and see if Jeremy maybe is working with somebody in Kirkland. So it's shared data, and there'll be, obviously, confidentiality and privacy is already on through the vendor. I don't know if that's getting at your question, but then we do disaggregate the data when we're reporting out. So we're only looking at City of Redmond data.
On the reporting, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I would say I would be interested. I think the confidentiality clause is fairly small, just given that it's an agreement between, it says that, "Take reasonable security precautions to ensure that person's not authorized to view the data. Do not gain access to the data." We have an outline of who can and can't access the data, but I think that would be, I would love to know what some of those guidelines are. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes, thank you, Council Chair. My question is actually very similar to Council President Kritzer, but maybe just a step more. I think we always have been concerned about privacy and data leaks, and I think over the years, we always worry about data getting in the wrong hands. That's shifted a little bit in our world in that now we have concerns about how the data might be used by levels of government. And I know there are all those protections, but what I would like to see is that when you report on this, that that is a feature of, were there requests for data, you know, in the nature of perhaps immigrant enforcement or something like that? I think that we need to be, stay vigilant and aware of how people are being treated in our community. And I'm not against this. I think it's amazingly wonderful that we are doing this with Bellevue and Kirkland because, as you said, people don't just stay in one location. It's very fluid. I used to go out with our homeless outreach person on walkabouts and rides, and I learned that people move almost, well, not daily, but to some extent daily. They park their car at a different church in a different city. So I just want to make sure that we are vigilant and protect that data in the future. Can we add that as part of the oversight?
Yeah, so we already actually do have some established policies and procedures. And then as part of the vetting of this software, our TIS went through a very thorough process to ensure that all the kind of privacy compliance, I don't have all the actual terminology on what they use, but there was definitely a very thorough vetting before we decided to host this platform. And just speaking to the point, our client data is pretty limited, and I'm very mindful of, you know, what are we asking and why. And so we're certainly not asking for immigration status. It's a very minimal data, demographic data about race and ethnicity, age, gender, some really just basic data. And then the more robust data is, I spent five hours with this client, and I successfully housed them, so some of that outcome data. But we could certainly, I don't know if the ask is to come back with additional information.
Let me jump in, Brooke, if you're okay. So I think you all are right. The city is also going through the data governance process, and we've been, as Brooke mentioned, working with TIS through using this vendor, but also through the Community Health Program as a whole. And so I think hearing your highlight, Councilmember Fields, will bring, I think, that work to the community health work overall, because we also have talked about how we share our data with police and with fire and the other teams just internally, and how to have some of those kind of different protections. But also, we would like to know whether police and our homeless outreach team and fire are working with the same person. And with our past model, we weren't, and we're still working on integrating that. And so, yes, we will bring forward that work, I think, with data governance overall as we keep addressing it as a city.
Councilmember?
One quick follow-up. Sorry, one quick follow-up. Deputy Director, that goes almost to the heart of my question, and I appreciate that, I really do, that it's a bigger issue than just this data. The question that I was asking is, can council be briefed on who's knocking at the door? Who's not, which potential agencies are asking for data so that we can be clear that our protection is actually working?
Yes, and I think that's what I was saying. It might make most sense for us to include it as a part of our community health updates that we come to you more regularly for data with our clients. We could also include it. I'm trying to think of the way, how we're letting you know the method here. So Brooke, if you have a different idea, but we can think about how to best keep you appraised of who's knocking at the door.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Noiva Camina?
Thank you, Chair. My question is very similar around data, but more, more looking at, it's one thing to know our own city and biases that may or may not be present throughout departments in our own city, and we know our values. We're now entering into an agreement with two neighboring cities. I love the collaborative approach that we're taking and how do we make it more efficient. But I also want to bring a lens of equity and acknowledging bias that perhaps not now, but there may be a different bias leaning in neighboring cities than what we hold to be true here in Redmond. So what, and I don't know the answer, but is there something that we can put in place that speaks to that, to where the data, the information that we have on these community members isn't going to be used in a harmful way?
Yeah, so I'll jump in and say, I'll also share, we meet monthly with these other cities and their staff and have very strong collaboration, and the outreach teams also meet. And I think we also have a clause and ability to, if we feel like our data is not being used or there are things that are unethical, we have a, you know, clause that we can remove other cities from that, because our experience has actually been that we aren't serving folks as well because we don't have methods of sharing communication as much. And so, on the one hand, yes, I think we'll continue to work and come up with privacy agreements, and as you said, we can get back to you on some of that at a later date. But I would also share that what I have also seen in my history in this work too, is because we are so focused on keeping individuals and systems and not allowing other departments, people end up being treated in silos, and then we are actually not ending up helping individuals overall. Like, we've seen that with, when you have the data and someone's coming in and out of the criminal justice system, as well as hospital, as well as police, and it's all systems to them, right? And so we are trying to both honor and protect people's privacy and, while also trying to best serve them as one, as one.
I appreciated that, you mentioning that there's a clause to where if that were to happen, then we can remove. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think if we had any concerns that they were not in similar values, that we would definitely take advantage of that.
Wonderful, thank you.
And similar for them with us, I would assume, as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Yep, Council President Kritzer?
I'll just say, I really appreciate this conversation, and I think, and I'm good with us moving forward. I do really appreciate the intent to be able to ensure stronger casework and support for those in need across our jurisdiction. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Absolutely.
Are there any concerns with moving this to the June 3rd consent agenda? Great, we will see it then. Thank you. The next item is from police. Police Department Wellness Coordinator and Peer Support Program Administrator Contract with Public Safety Psychological Services. We have Deputy Chief Coats here with us online.
Hello, and apologies for not being in person. And Chief Lo has a conflict. He's actually teaching a class here in Spokane at the conference we're attending. So I have the pleasure of presenting a few of the following items. Number one is, we are seeking council's approval to enter into a contract with Public Safety Psychological Services, or PSPS for short. They were selected through a competitive RFP process where other entities literally from around the country submitted bids, and we ended up selecting PSPS based on their being local and their knowledge of stressors that are unique to law enforcement. In fact, we use a portion of PSPS services currently for our pre-employment psychological assessments. We are continuing to expand our wellness program within the department. Physical wellness is one thing, but mental health is something we are really working to improve on. I was just talking to this vendor. They have a booth here at the conference about the ever-changing process of increasing the culture where it's okay to seek help for your mental health and well-being. In other words, reducing this stigma of seeking help when things just aren't going your way. We really like this contractor. I think they will do good work, and this will be a change from the vendor that we've had for the past 17 years, but optimistic that they will get us going on the right track, administering the peer support program and our overall wellness coordination. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Yeah, Councilmember Noiva Camina?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for joining us, Deputy Chief. I appreciate you taking time. I know it's difficult juggling all the things when you're traveling, so I appreciate it. I'm very excited about moving this forward to consent as that our teams get the support that they need. So thank you.
Great. And just want to echo Councilmember Noiva Camina, especially in the section regarding cultural competency. I think it's really important when we're talking through mental and behavioral health supports that we have a holistic view there. So thank you for including that, or thank PSPS for including that. To confirm, this is for consent on June 3rd?
Correct.
Great. Any objections? Great. We will see it on June 3rd. And I believe you are here for the next item with us as well. We will be discussing the school zone speed safety camera program ordinance amendment and vendor contract.
Yes, correct. We've been here before. I think, basically, we've listened, we've heard to the comments and questions, and I think what we're proposing tonight will be palatable to the council, and we'll check a lot of the boxes to hopefully get this across the finish line. This is an item we would like to take to consent also on June 3rd. And what you have there in the packet is an amendment to RMC 10.25 as it relates to automated speed cameras. What we did here was remove any reference to red light cameras. I would say remove reference to park zone cameras, but we never added it. But, so we're not talking about park zone cameras. We're only talking about authorization to enforce school zone speed limits via automatic cameras, while also incorporating the legislative updates for the applicable RCW. So everything has been basically removed except for school zones. The other thing is, what we've presented previously was an analysis report and recommendations as they relate to automated speed cameras in school zones. And what we have done, and I'll talk about it in further detail here in just a couple minutes, was modify the suggested fine amounts based on the miles per hour over the speed limit. And that's kind of the biggie. The other part of it is just bolding and highlighting what has been previously reported, and I'll go into further detail on that. Combined between the amended Redmond Municipal Code and the analysis and recommendation report, both documents will serve as the city's policy for this program. To begin, and I will say we maybe have not been clear about the question as to who sets the penalty amounts, who sets the fines. And we have referred to the statute related to automated speed safety cameras. And what that statute does is gives cities the maximum amount that you can fine people for violating the speed limit. So on a non-school zone, for example, park zone, construction zone, the maximum you can penalize somebody is $145. For school zones, it doubles to $290, and that's the maximum. But with that being said, we don't have to administer the maximum fine. We have checked around with what other jurisdictions are doing. I had a long talk with the traffic engineering manager with Kenmore about what they're doing. They've ever-expanding their school zone program. And what we are proposing in the recommendations is a scalable fine amount. So for example, six to nine miles per hour over the limit, which is still pretty fast, 26 to 29 miles per hour is only $110. And then that'll double to 220 when you're 10 to 14 miles per hour over the limit. And then anything over 15 miles per hour would be the maximum, $290 fine. Something to keep in mind, even though almost $300 seems like a hefty amount for speeding, but without sounding too doom and gloom, a child hit by a car going 15 or over, it's going to be not a good day for that child and likely a fatality. Speaking with Kenmore on the fine amounts, with that lower $100, $110 fine amount, they're experiencing about 90% of the people who get that ticket just paid the fine. So that reduces a burden on the court. It reduces the burden of people who choose to appear in court to contest or mitigate the fine penalty. So that is a big number. The other thing to keep in mind, and the vendors who do this business will cite a 70% reduction in speeding violations once the warning signs go up and the system becomes operational. What Kenmore found was that number is wrong, very wrong. What they've experienced is it's more like a 99% compliance rate with the posted 20 mile per hour speed limit. In fact, their average speed limit through these school zones has reduced to 17 miles per hour. So when you look at the smaller fine amounts, we're not looking, this isn't a revenue generating project. This is a project that is designed or intended to change basically the behavior of our drivers that are hauling through the school zones. I should back up a little bit, that 45 days prior to going live, where people will get tickets for real, there'll be a warning period. During this period, violators who are speeding will get a notice in the mail. It'll look like a real ticket. It'll show their license plate. It'll show the speed they are traveling. It will show the posted 20 mile per hour speed limit and the flashing beacon, all basically in a collage of photographs, which is quite frankly, difficult to dispute. So they'll get that notice in the mail. It'll say, "There is no fine expected. No further action taken. You do not need to respond." But it's basically an eye-opener for at least during the warning period. Regarding the analysis report and recommendations, we've heard your questions regarding, will this only, will the tickets only apply during school zone hours when the beacon is flashing? And that is covered on page nine of the report. I even bolded it, and it should be very clear to anybody that this will only be an opportunity for a ticket when that beacon is flashing. And then there were another question about mitigated fines for people who just can't afford the ticket, and that is required by the statute. There will be a box to check on the citation that people receive in the mail, that they, certain recipients are eligible for a 50% reduction of the fine penalty, and that is located on page 10 of the report. And then I'll just kind of keep talking, and I'll take your questions here in a little bit. There was a concern or questions regarding adding the additional burden to the community. And I guess the only thing to say on that is, this is a fine that is, there's basically no way to know you're not entering a photo enforcement zone. So there's going to be adequate signs. There's going to be a lot of outreach before we go live. If you want to avoid the ticket, the simple answer is try not to speed through those zones. So this is 100% preventable. We just need motorists to be mindful that you're entering a school zone where children are present. And then concerns about the survey. We all know how the survey ended up. It was about 52% not opposed. But when you look at the reason for opposing speed safety cameras, a lot of it is just not knowing what people don't know, and the assumption that it's just another revenue source for the city. The people voting no on traffic safety cameras aren't really answering the question of, you know, will this increase, you know, a level of safety amongst our vulnerable pedestrians that are trying to navigate their way on foot and bicycle to school. I will highlight that a majority of the respondents did express concern about speeding vehicles, reckless and distracted drivers. I think that the reckless and distracted drivers will solve itself when people are knowing that they're entering a zone that is enforced by cameras. And then just reading through the narratives, again, the people that took the time to fill out the questionnaire, they reported witnessing near misses in the crosswalk, drivers failing to yield the right of way. There was a lot of requests for additional crosswalks and traffic calming measures. These are all things that we can incorporate and add based on the revenue generated from the fines. Number one priority for the revenues is to pay for the contractor to install and monitor the cameras, and then the remaining funding will be used to potentially add crosswalks and other traffic safety measures. And then a question about coordination with the school district. I do have the luxury of meeting with the school district safety director on a monthly basis over coffee. I have discussed the speed, the school zone cameras with him. He has taken it to their leadership in the school district, and they are in favor. What we have talked about is joining forces between the police department and the school district on some public education campaigns via social media on the do's and don'ts when you're entering a school zone, and particularly when you're approaching a crosswalk that is occupied by people. Do people even know that you can't enter a crosswalk and somebody is in that lane and an additional lane? You have to give people that chance to change their mind and go back the other direction. So a little bit of a public education campaign, I think, can go a long way to educate the parents and students that are traveling to and from school. And then just, I'll end on historically, anytime a city's look at implementing a program such as this, it's hard to get public buy-in because we're basically asking the question in surveys, are you in favor of another contraption that could likely give somebody a ticket? But I think to combat that, and the way other cities have addressed that, is by just being ultra-transparent, communicating how the program is doing, the number of fines that are issued. The city is producing a FAQ that will be on the city's website that includes questions like, why is the city looking at doing school zone cameras? What will these cameras, what will these cameras give me a ticket for? How much will the ticket cost? Who gets the money from fines, and on and on. And I think the more we can communicate those questions and answers to the public, the more we are likely to get buy-in. So with all that being said, and I've said a lot, we are looking to take this to consent once again on June 3rd, looking at the amendment to RMC 10.25, approval of the speed safety cameras. We have modified it, and then approval to enter to a contract with Navoa Global to install the cameras and monitor the fines. And with all that, I am happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate the work you've done. As I mentioned, when this was before us, a month or so ago, I voted no, and I also reflected that I was torn. And I was torn for a couple of reasons, some of which you addressed. One of the questions that I had at the time, and it wasn't included in your answers, and it may have been answered, but I don't think it was clear to me, and that is, what is the authority of council if the mayor's office wants to change some of these parameters in the future? In other words, if they want to lower those thresholds or raise those fees, I'm making the slippery slope argument here a bit. And conversely, I was talking to a former council member, and when this came up, geez, probably 20 years ago, they did a pilot program on something very similar, and then decided, you know, after the pilot program, that it wasn't in the best interest of the community. I know times have changed, and again, I appreciate this, but I'm still concerned that if it doesn't work, or if there's some desire to buy the mayor's office to make it tighter in either speed or increase the fees or change anything substantial, what is council's role in that? And I know it's a question that you can't answer, but I was hoping that the chief would have answered it.
No, and I recall that, the question that you had, kind of the, the checks and balances of council and where that falls in the program. What we intend to do is, is bring this, the feedback, the follow-up reports to council's attention on a quarterly basis. So you can see the numbers for yourself, how many tickets are being issued? What are the metrics that we're tracking? What is, what are the reduced speed limits that we're seeing? And we can always massage and tweak what needs tweaking. I do recall that the city tried a red light and school zone camera. I believe there was a school zone camera in Einstein several years ago. I'm not clear on why that did not continue, but I guess for, for my two cents, what it's worth is, is we all drive the roads nowadays. It seems like driving behavior is not what it used to be. And unfortunately, it takes a, a negative reinforcement to remind our motorists that there are rules to abide by. Because even though we, we don't have the, the crash data to show this is a problem, we have kids injured in the crosswalk, you know, all the time. It isn't that. This is to put a system in place that's proactive. We want to avoid that kind of tragedy from happening in our community. And we believe we can do this by lowering speeds to 17 miles per hour as opposed to 40 mile per hour in a school zone. And this program, I believe, aligns very nicely with the Sabre Street Action Plan, which you've heard some about. And it aligns with our community's goals of having a, a city that has very few, if any, serious injury, traffic collisions involving vehicles, pedestrians, bicyclists, people on scooters. It, it, it just kind of feeds right into that, into that action plan. So I hope that answers your question.
It, it does. And I, I appreciate the, the full and, and even your reflections on your experience in the past. So it, it does answer my question and I appreciate that very much. And the quarterly reports, I think, are important. One last small thing, I just want to say for the record here, I'm, I'm trying not to sound like a conspiracy theorist, but I would ask the same, I will, I will ask the same question about data and who wants that data in the future. I think it's just another way of collecting information that can be misused. I, I trust the courts, but I also know that there will be city data available. And I have concerns about data not being used correctly, but that's not really for you at this moment. I appreciate you and I will very likely support this.
Thank you. Council president Kritzer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the work on this and the, the response to council member concerns that got raised when we, we last looked at a similar item. Two thoughts. One is, I wonder in the spirit of the change of the proposal now, to be able to do basically these three cameras and then to revisit, kind of see how, how it's working and be able to, to then look at whether we would want to expand. I wonder if we just want to name this, the speed camera pilot program so that it's clear to our community that we're piloting this. We're gonna, we're gonna see how it works. We'll be checking in on the data. And, and I noticed on page one of the, of the report or the program recommendations, it does talk about first doing these cameras, then, then going to parks. Maybe we could just update that sentence to be, to, to add the clarity that council member Fields was referring to, you know, after X amount of time of, you know, reviewing the data on these initial cameras, the police will, police department will bring back to the city council, a review of that information and discussion of potential expansion to park zones, if the data supports it or something like that. So that way it's clear that we'll, we'll use this as an iterative process. And if, and I would just say, I'm, I'm okay with kind of the rest of this, but if we wanted to have the additional piece for those on council that, that had the concern about, about the process, we could add during the, in the section in the document under speed camera deployment plan, maybe there's kind of all the, the details of how it's going to work. We could add a last section that says, that outlines essentially what you said in terms of the cadence for reporting back and revisiting, you know, any future, just to say, any major changes to this will be brought back for review and decision by the council. So that way it's just clear that we're, we're basically approving these three cameras at three school areas during school times and we're going to see how that goes and hopefully make our kids a little bit safer. And then, and then look at, at whether we want to do more. I think that, that would probably be a good step forward and hopefully, I would hope that we could bring our council all together on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. And it, it addition, well, in lieu of expanding park zones, what other cities councils have done is looked at two or three school, particular schools and then asked to expand that to other schools, because we have several others in the city. So that could be a future consideration as, as well. Sorry for interrupting there.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think, I appreciate that. So anyway, yeah, if you wanted to adjust that language before this comes to us for the, the final vote, I think that would be good and maybe add also into that speed camera deployment plan section, just a section on reporting and changes to plan or something. So that way we just have it written down and everyone can feel assured on that.
Thank you, council president. That sounds good to me. Any concerns with that from council? Great. Council member Stewart.
Thank you. Really appreciate the extra work that's gone into this since the last time we discussed this topic and only furthering of, of the prior council direction on this. So I really do appreciate it and appreciate the, the conversation here today. I just want to draw a couple of things together. Deputy chief coats, I didn't realize that the leadership team was traveling. I hope that someone will be available for our business meeting tonight. We have our first quarter financials. There is a slide in that report that references that the camera program was expected to generate revenue. Now, we all understand and have been studying the nuance of that in order to pay for themselves, but it would be really wonderful if one of you from the leadership team in the police department would be able to hop online and share that as part of that report tonight, since we will have the listening public tuning in. And the, the second point I wanted to brought, bring in from another topic on our agenda tonight is we have a read-only item in this packet for this meeting. We're probably not going to discuss it too much, but we've got great news. Property crime is down quarter, year over year for the first quarter and vehicle thefts are down year over year here in Redmond by big numbers. But you know what went up? Traffic collisions. And we have just adopted the Safe Streets For All Action Plan. We have just been putting in place all of this. So I really do hope the council can come together and come back. And if there are council members that still have lingering questions on this, I, I understand that the department's been very eager to chat with folks individually too. So I hope that we can all come together and finish the work on this in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And I will just close by expressing my support. I think I've, I've supported these speed cameras at school zones specifically for, for some time, and I think it's going to be really critical to the point that council member Stewart mentioned. You did a great job in your presentation of sharing, you know, what's new, answering a lot of the questions that I, I believe you had received over email. I did just want to recap a few notes that council vice president Forsyth had sent in since she's unable to join. And if, I, I believe you addressed most, if not all, but if there is anything that's left out, feel free to jump in deputy chief with any response, but specifically a question on when council will see policy recommendations on the ticket fee and the process for low-income reduction. And then specifically conversations or comments on the speed camera report to share with the council is that to council vice president, the data shows that people are concerned about speeding, but the overwhelming majority still feel safe walking. But it also shows that we may need, we do need better coordination with LWSD around pickup and drop off safety, driving do's and don'ts, blocking the road, driveways, aggression and parking in neighborhoods, which we've heard a lot about. And then finally, the majority of the frustration in the comments are people concerned with distracted driving, school pickup, drop off congestion, lack of sidewalks and lack of beacon flashing crossings. The speed cameras do nothing to ease these community raised concerns. So I just wanted to throw that back at you. If you feel like anything is left unsaid on this, I just wanted to make sure that we, we should flag that for, for council.
And I did get the questions a couple of days ago. I think I have answered them all, except mainly, mainly just the, the community concern aspect with the distracted drivers. I, I, I think having adequate signage and outreach will, will help with that. It, it's hard to address distracted driving without having officers out there physically seeing that people are on their phone and not concentrating on the road, which is something we could do in conjunction with the cameras. But otherwise, I think I addressed most of her questions there.
Great. Thank you. Any concerns from council to see this on the June 3rd consent agenda? Great. We will see it then. Next item is information only. It's also from deputy chief coats. It's the Redmond Police Department gift cards for guns.
Yes. As you recall, council allocated $50,000 to support a gun exchange program. We decided to hold one event in the spring and another in the fall. The spring event was held on April 19th. Not knowing what to expect from the community responses, we decided to get $15,000 worth of Visa debit cards to exchange for people who turned in their firearms. That turned out to be not quite enough as we sold out by 11 o'clock and we were supposed to go till noon. Just for council's information, we did take in almost 100 firearms, 98 to be exact, in exchange for $15,000 in the Visa debit cards. That broke down to taking in 18 pistols, 24 revolvers, 36 rifles, including two assault style rifles and 16 shotguns. So very successful event. We had people showing up after we ran out of money. So we are looking, very much looking forward to hosting an event, an event again on September 20th, if you'd like to mark that on your calendars. It's the Saturday where we will have another $35,000 to exchange for firearms and with the sole purpose, well, one of the purposes being just getting guns out of homes where they can be accessed by children, burglars, you name it. It was a very successful first blush and we're looking forward to the fall event. Questions or comments?
Thank you, council member Stewart.
Thank you. I'll just continue to thank you and your team for the incredible work on this. It was incredibly well-run. You all were prepared for everything. You were prepared for the things that you advertised not to be brought, to be brought to this event and the like. Thank you for including in the report the amount of hour, overtime hours that it took to pull this event off. And this is all great data for us moving forward as we continue to bolster responsible gun safety here in our city and prevent gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, council president Kritzer.
I'll just note, I know that on some of the city's social media posts about this event, there were several comments in advance of it from, from various people, kind of questioning who would take advantage of this. And clearly there's a huge demand to be able to use this and, and our community is now safer because of this event. Our kids are safer and our families are safer. So looking forward to the next one. Thanks.
Council member Ivy Camina.
Thank you, chair. Deputy chief coats, congratulations on a very successful event. I'm so glad that, that we pushed forward with this and that the community showed up. I had a question about the budget for it. I know that we had, as council had approved 50,000. We've had, total net was 19,000, including the overtime. Is the overtime for the fall event going to be factored in to that?
That's a good question. The overtime is an important piece because there are so many components necessary to run a, a program like this, to having qualified range masters expecting clear the firearms, traffic control and all that. And yeah, that's a good question. To me it's-
Just so that we know how, how much in gift cards we can go get.
Sure, sure. I, I think the overtime, this is, this is me, the deputy chief speaking, but I think that's a, we can chalk that up to a cost of doing business. And I would, my preference, I think the chief would echo, is to use the entire 35,000 to get some more guns off the street.
Thank you again for your work on this.
Great. Thank you. I think that is it on this item. Our next item is a read only, which is the Redmond Police Department Police Activity Report Q1 2025. If council does have any questions, we could raise them to deputy chief coats. But I did want to thank council member Stewart for some of the statistics that, and the data that she shared from the report and just two other flags. One is that the report also covers the drone as a first responder activity and we received 489 total DFR drone as a first responder calls, which included first responder calls and officer support calls. There's a lot of data in here. If folks are interested, they can go check that out. And then another flag that I did want to share, and actually, if I can lead with this question, is the gold jewelry thefts and robbery series with, in which elderly victims wearing gold jewelry and watches are usually out for a walk and suspects engage victims in conversations, call them over to the vehicle and remove the jewelry, essentially stealing it from them and, and fleeing. So could you sort of comment on that and see remark on what the response is from our police department?
Yes, I can. And thanks for flagging that. This is a trend that if you all recall, we saw at the end of last year. It is rearing its ugly head again with two or three recent jewelry snatches. We have a, a primary detective assigned to this who works with detectives from other police departments. This is a crime that doesn't recognize where the city of Redmond ends and the city of Bellevue begins. Same actors are hitting multiple communities. So we're sharing intelligence. A lot of times we know who they are because they've been arrested before. The, the challenge with this crew is identifying them based on their vehicle, which is what cops are used to doing. You run a license plate and you have a lead. Unfortunately, these vehicles are primarily rental vehicles, usually with a lease agreement using fraudulent identification. It's well on the radar of patrol. I, I question the swing shift supervisor and leadership all the time about just being mindful that we're out in the neighborhoods that are most commonly targeted during the evening hours when people are out for their evening stroll. So it is on all of our minds. As you recall, we had the automated license plate reading cameras approved by council a long time ago, and they are finally being implemented here within the next week or two, including three cameras that Woodbridge Community out off of 188th in the east end of town purchased on their own and, and donated to the city. That is an area that it was hit recently with one of these jewelry snatches. And if that camera had, had been operational, we would have got some good information from that camera to pursue leads. So where all those systems go, I imagine we'll be doing some, we are doing some more outreach via social media. And I imagine we will be sooner rather than later doing some presentations out in the community for the, what to be mindful of. And we do know that that works because we had a fair number of attempted crimes where people recognized what was happening to them and were able to distance themselves and walk away. So just continuing that outreach from a crime prevention standpoint.
Great. Thank you so much. Any other questions from council on this agenda item? Perfect. Thank you, deputy chief. We are at our, oh, great. We are at our final item on the agenda. It's a item from a, another committee. It's the Southeast Redmond Market Study Consultant Contract Approval. We have senior planner Lauren Albert, long-range planning manager Jeff Churchill and deputy director Sarah F. Allen. And I believe the ask on this is to provide direction from council.
Thank you. All right. Greetings again. Our next item is requesting approval for the Southeast Redmond Market Study Consultant Contract and for this to be placed on the consent agenda for June 3rd. The contract is with Burke to conduct a market study to support the application for countywide manufacturing and industrial center in Southeast Redmond. And I will turn it over to Lauren to provide more information.
Thank you. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. The BERC team is going to take a holistic approach in integrating land use, considering access, transportation, infrastructure needs, economic development goals, and our market demand drivers for the area to conduct a market study for our application for a countywide, countywide industrial and manufacturing center in Southeast Redmond. Redmond 2050 established this countywide, south, countywide industrial center in Southeast Redmond. And as part of our certification process, we're going to be conducting this market study. Some of the deliverables are going to be an engagement plan, a review of existing conditions, a review of key market drivers and business opportunities, including an analysis of up to six industries, and a, and a site analysis for up to five sites. And the final document will be a strategy guide. The cost of the project is just under $75,000, and it was included in the, the biennial budget. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. Not really a question, just a comment to kind of put us all back on the same page, just with the timeline of everything. Whenever I see something like this come up, I always look on the memos to see the last date, you know, that we discussed an item. And this is just one of those things that, this is really important. This is implementing some major decisions we made about our growth patterns here in Redmond a couple of years ago. I think the composition of our council was even a little different the last time we discussed this. So even though our software doesn't reflect that in all the previous contact buckets related to the, the document that's before us and the agreement that's before us, this is really exciting because this is helping us implement the community's vision and ultimately what we decided through the environmental impact statement process and the economic planning of our city, all as part of Redmond 2050. So just really excited to see this come forward. It's an important next step and one that we haven't had a lot to do with in the last couple of years, really. So excited to see us coming back to this conversation and to the work ahead on the, on the center certification. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing the results of this study. I did note that environmental concerns and, and in particular, kind of impact on environmentally sensitive areas shows up under Task Five. When I was first reading through this, under the kind of initial scope of work statement, it kind of lists, as, as you mentioned, I think you read some of those different goals out there. It doesn't mention our environmental sustainability goals as kind of in the top lines there. So I would just suggest maybe if we wanted to have on this scope of work, just in that first paragraph, to have that be front and center as one of the, ensure that that's one of the core considerations as we think about how we balance all of this to make sure that we really take a triple bottom line approach to this. Which, again, I see it further down in the scope of work. I just think if we wanted to reiterate it somewhere else in the scope to ensure that that's kind of threaded throughout, I think would be really important. Does that make sense?
I think so. Are you talking about the ESAP goals and making sure they're included in the scope of work at basically higher up, or take what we have from the bottom and make sure it's?
I think it's just that the, the first paragraph on, that shows up on page nine of the document that's in our packet, under the, that's under, under the, the agreement when it starts with the actual scope of work, before we actually sign it. I think it'd be great, that first, this is like a super nitpicky thing. But under that first paragraph, it lists, in use considerations, access, transportation, infrastructure needs, economic development goals, and market demand drivers. I think it would just be useful to say sustainability goals in there. So we just kind of have that from the beginning and threaded throughout.
We can make that change. Yep.
Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah. Whenever we do the, this kind of analysis and in particular, how we're going to use our land, how we're going to sort of fill that geographical opportunities, you always get the, the contrast between some of our goals. Increased affordable housing, more of this type of businesses because they have, you know, that middle-income type wages as opposed to the high-tech wages or the service-level wages. So I think addressing some of these potential contrasts or conflicts in this report would be really helpful for the decision-making that the city has to do. And, and I'm actually reflecting back about six or seven years when this was sort of a hot button for the city. There were a lot of small business owners that felt they were being, manufacturing business owners that felt they were going to be squeezed out or left aside because we had other demands for that space with affordable housing. So whatever these community conflicts are, I hope that we face them straight on and bring back that information in the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields.
Any other questions? Concerns with seeing this on the June 3rd consent agenda? Great. We will see it then.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have now reached the end of today's agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.